I would like to bring this meeting to order at 6:04 on Wednesday, June 16. If we could please take a roll call of our existing board members.
Sure. Kelly Clunzak?
Yes.
Claudia Parker?
Yes.
Kimberly Leonard? Yes. Judith Thresson?
Yes.
Rachel Merricklin?
Yes.
Yes, all present.
Great, thank you. If we could all please rise and applaud your leaders.
My apologies to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Japan's one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So next, I would actually ask if we could make one addition to our agenda that we have this evening. I'd like to make a late, last-minute addition under Someone You Should Know, and I will be presenting for Alex and I.
And are there any subtractions, petitions?
I don't believe so. So if I could have someone please make a motion to approve the agenda with one addition.
I'll make the first motion.
Thanks.
Kim Leonard, yes. Judy Basin?
Yes.
Rachel Merricklin?
Yes.
Claudia Parker?
Yes.
Kelly Clunzak?
Yes.
One motion, yes.
Thank you all for being here. I skipped over that, my excitement to get moving along. So thank you guys for everyone for being here this evening. Do you want to move on to staff reports? Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our June 16 board meeting. At this time, we will begin our Someone You Should Know. Ms. Iverson will present this.
Nikki Seidel. Seidel.
Ms. Iverson?
Good evening. It is an honor to present Nikki Seidel as one of the people you should know in Evergreen. She has been the library director for the Evergreen Park Public Library for over 20 years, fostering a positive and cooperative work environment and building a library community that provides its patrons with access to far more than books. When I began my position as district librarian, Nikki was the first person I reached out to looking for advice on how we could collaborate to cross-promote our libraries. Nikki was with us at the start of Evergreen Reads, offering guidance and support as we embarked on our community read initiative. Her energy and positivity are infectious, and her knowledge of the library system and how to create a library that is the heart of a community is inspirational. One of my favorite memories is sitting in on the interview Nikki did with Clerk Kathy Aparo. This was for a pop-up version of the NPR program StoryCorps that Nikki helped bring to the Evergreen Park Library. Nikki, I'm sorry that I can't be there in person, but you will be missed, and we wish you the best in your retirement. Thank you for all that you've done for Evergreen Park.
And I can present this because I've known Nikki a really long time. Thank you so much for everything.
Absolutely. And now you're gonna cry.
Thank you. Dr. Margaret Longo will introduce, will present our next Some People You Should Know. This is Katie Patrice and Ms. Joanne Riley.
Well, yeah, really, Katie Patrice are really someone you should know. Communication and partnerships are essential to well-run school districts. From the first day, joining Evergreen Park Elementary School District 124, we know it was going to be hard work opening a school district during the pandemic. Honestly, Joanne and Katie listened closely, rolled up their sleeves, and joined the team. We had 50 people helping us open the schools. Joanne and Katie answered the call to engage our staff in the efforts supporting opening schools and our children. Throughout the year, we deliberated sometimes at 10 o'clock at night to ensure our staff was listened to and cared for. The discussions were not always easy, but they were always respectful. We are grateful for both of you, for your leadership, and thank you for your tireless efforts on behalf of our staff. Thank you, Joanne and Katie, for stepping up and being leaders in difficult times. You know it wasn't easy, but both of you shined. This is why Joanne and Katie are someone you should know.
I'll take the picture. Dr. Longo? Over here. We're gonna make it all official. Yep.
Just being in that lobby. It's all the same thing. What's left? You're gonna picture them all.
I'm not the Alex Meister photographer. I'm calling you now.
We know.
Oh. There we go.
Sad, thank you. We're gonna miss the sad.
We're getting our workouts today, aren't we? Lots of running around. That's okay. But they look good. So.
Our next someone you should know, Ms. R. Will be presented by Tim Prestecki.
Deb has just been terrific there. And with this, about eight years? Ten years. She makes it go so seamless. And this particular year has probably been one of her toughest years. Food service is usually a nine-month job, and it's been a 12-month job, almost six days a week. She's been doing extra programs to help the community during these very tough times this year, and has been running food banks and preparing extra meals for all summer long. Last summer and this summer, she's just been tireless and terrific. Even when she calls in sick for her children, she's still on the phone and dealing with everything she has to deal with and to make sure that things go well. I think a testament to any good manager is how well your employees feel about you, and the fact that she has such a loyal and long-serving staff bodes very well for her management style. So I thought that she's someone you should know.
And the final Some Ones You Should Know. Some Ones You Should Know are our, obviously, our superintendents who have led us this year. So this was the last minute, so last minute, we couldn't, we had to be stealthy. You'll get your certificates later. So obviously, to Some Ones You Should Know, Dr. Leila Bridges-Webb and Dr. Margaret Longo. Alex wrote most of these words, but I put my own splash on them. From day one, it has been what, about doing what's best for the kids, making sure every student received a quality education during the pandemic, and that the kids who wanted to be in school could be in school. They have served as mentors to so many across the district, working alongside principals, directors, central staff office, central office staff, and others to understand the way that we do things in Evergreen, and also to open our eyes to new ways of doing things. They have ensured the district is fiscally responsible and good stewards of the taxpayer dollars without impacting negatively the education of our students. They have established a relationship with the union that allows the teachers and administrators to work together for the common good. Overall, they have put practices into place that will allow the district to flourish, even as we have to say goodbye to them in the next few weeks. I personally have been amazed over the past year by the impact these educators have had with us and also during their careers. It keeps coming up. Dr. Longo worked and served in 124 many years ago, and some of the teachers she hired then are still with us now. It keeps coming up, which is wonderful. And I'm always amazed, they seem to know everybody, anybody in education. She's just amazing. Oh, I know so-and-so. They're super in that, just like, everybody, they know everybody. So we are so fortunate to have had them with us this year. I consider myself blessed to know them all. And we should feel honored that they are retiring again. District 124. So Doctors Leila Bridges-Webb and Dr. Margaret Longo are definitely Some Ones that we all should know. Certificate. Like I said, we had something. I'm sorry, we'll take, let's take a picture of this.
Write it.
Let's take a picture of the entire board. I like that. Let's get everybody out of the stage.
I'll take a kiss. I'll take one. I have Eric.
Always.
Start people on the front.
Okay, now. She always tells us that. Principal Longo got that. I remember from, I remember from dinner.
Are you ready? Such pretty smiles. There you go. Okay, a couple. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'm so, I am so humbled. As I, as I spoke with principals today and the other administrators, this has been an amazing experience for all of us. The district didn't come home. 124. We're so grateful for all of you and for all that work has been done. You know, it hasn't been an easy year, but you know that you're in good hands. You have incredible administrators and incredible new administrative team that are gonna do great things for the district. And it is gonna be the premier district in Southop County. We truly believe that. We just met with the foundation earlier, and the foundation has plans for the start of the school year to bring us back. We're grateful for the kindness from our families and the children. Leila and I were able to visit all the buildings the last day of school, and with the exception of the masks, it was all just normal and happy and exciting. So thank you, everyone, who welcomed us and worked with us through pretty tough times.
And as for me, Margaret always talks first. She talks the longest. But I want you to know, for Margaret, it was coming home. For me, it was a meeting of new faces, new places, new friends. I'm so proud to be a part of your community. And once, you can never get rid of me. But I've met, you have a wonderful team, a wonderful community, and the children are absolutely beautiful. So thank you for choosing me, choosing us. And we wish you so much success. You're in great hands. As we pass the torch to your new leadership, you're in great hands. And so just proud to be a part of you. Thank you so much.
Yeah. A thank you letter here from the Police Department of Village Evergreen Park. Brought to Jan Stanton. I deeply appreciate the thoughtful cards, letters, and gift cards that were so generously sent to members of the Evergreen Park Police Department from Evergreen Park Elementary School District 124 students. So it will take time for all of us, our community, and the nation as a consequence of many collective events affecting us all. Positive message expressed in your letter, a beautiful expression of appreciation toward all of us. It's awful to say the least. Please convey my personal thanks to everyone involved in this gracious act of kindness and recognition toward our personnel. My personal thanks, Michael D. Saunders, Chief of.
We are also happy to report that all of our schools were recognized for their PBIS efforts this year. There were 16 badges that schools could apply for, and the badges that the schools earned in Tier 1, 2, and 3, all schools earned in each category. So we just want to applaud and thank our students, our staff, for this and a difficult year to have this achievement. Please join me in the round of applause for our schools and our students.
So the five essentials information is in your board packet. We'll be doing the overall presentation at the July board meeting, but wanted you to have it in advance so that you could review it before the meeting. As you can see, there's been some great progress in many of our schools. Next, we have assessment presentations by our building principals. We had, we met with them today and went through the data, and I think you're going to be pleased by the work that's been done. Have data? Dr. Bannock?
Thanks. So the data is similar to what you saw in the winter when we presented. So the first slide shows you the percentage of students that are meeting the district benchmark. So at the district benchmark, benchmark for achievement is that they're achieving at the 50th percentile or above. So this is the percentage of students that met that. And you can kind of see the progression as it goes from, reach grade as it goes from fall to winter to spring. So for Northwest in particular, we had some good growth. Third grade, we, there was kind of a blip in the spring. They were on quarantine right before they took the test, and that seemed to affect them a little bit. Fourth grade, I know we talked about in the winter, and we put some things in place, and you can kind of see it went back up with that. So overall, considering the year, the staff did a tremendous job and did a great job with the creativity and things they brought into play. So there's some really good growth. The growth scores just remind you, so SGP stands for the student growth percentile. That is how the students grew as a percentile. So, for example, kindergarten grew better than 63% of kindergarteners that took, on average, grew better than 63% on average of kindergarteners who took the test. So some really good growth percentiles. The district goal for that is being above the 50th percentile. So we had all but the third grade are reading perform with that. So then for math, same thing. We see some of the great growth for there, too. Second grade going from 57th to 79th percentile. Same thing with the student, the SGP, some good growth as well, too. Obviously, still some areas that we need to address as we move forward. And part of that is just the limitations of this year, having a lot of people remote and coming back. Just, it'll be nice to have, hopefully, everyone back in person next year. So this is a new slide that we didn't do in the winter, but it's the SAT readiness for both reading and math. So what this, what the STAR company, Renaissance did, the people that do STAR, is they kind of correlated the STAR scores with how they, how students would do on the SAT. So the readiness is, being considered ready means that you have a 75% chance of getting a C or better on a credit-bearing course in college. And STAR has a correlation chart that goes down to sixth grade. And then Dr. Dugan, who worked with us, he kind of extrapolated that and saw that it was about the 75th percent, students would have to score it at about the 75th percentile for math or the 66th percentile for reading in order to be considered ready, SAT-ready, if you will. And so, like I said, they kind of correlated that down to the grades. And so this is the percentage of students who met that criteria. Once again, the 75th percentile at math or the 66th percentile at reading.
What a huge jump in math for second grade. Oh, my gosh.
So you can see, same thing, there's some good growth going across. It's just another way to look at this, to see kind of how we're doing, giving it a more long-term protection, how students would do with that as well, too. So then each school kind of came up with an action plan. So for Northwest, one of the things we talked about doing is continuing our work with culture. So one of the things we want to do is make sure that students are seeing themselves within the curriculum. We piloted a program this year, we started this last year and moved into this year with a program called Maze Works. So it's just a way for teachers, for students, excuse me, to see different cultures and to bring that into the classroom so they can have conversations about it and learn empathy skills with that. And then in terms of curriculum instruction, really focusing on the small group reading to ensure that the students, we're teaching in a whole group, that the students are mastering those skills and moving forward. Doing kind of the same things with math and moving forward, especially with areas of measurement and data, and then being able to hopefully use manipulatives next year and really kind of focus on that, having people in person so you can actually use the manipulatives would be, would be great. So we can actually move some of that forward as well, too. So that was Northwest. Any questions on?
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Southwest. Yeah, so, I mean, just reflecting on this, just really thank the teachers for their work this year. They, they had to exhibit a tremendous amount of creativity to navigate the things that they did. And one of the things I did the other night for our fifth grade awards, I challenged the fifth graders not to look at this year as a series of obstacles, but to think about the areas of their own practice where they improved. And so I think that there's a number of things that our teaching staff, everyone in the building did this year, that they want to continue in the years that follow, different ways to reach and engage students. And I think that creativity plays out in the data. Really strong growth from looking at the spring to, or the fall to spring numbers is kind of what you see here for the, for the achievement, for the achievement numbers for reading. And that, that SGP number that Matt spoke to, I think, really highlights the efficacy of the teachers to, and that kids that come into District 124 and these numbers, Southwest, are growing faster than similar, you know, students. And I think that's just a strong indicator there. Math as well was an area of strength for our school. Now, we did have a couple of teachers retire this year that had tremendous amount of experience and worked, some of the people we leaned on to highlight some of those math practices. So we're gonna, that's something we're gonna think about next year, is how to fill some of that, that gap. But our teachers are certainly up to the, up to the challenge. And then the SAT readiness one, I think, was really interesting. Spent a lot of time kind of combing through the individual student numbers on this. And so, for example, what Dr. Bannock talked about extrapolating that, that score down all the way to second grade, there were a lot of kids when we were going through the numbers that were right there. So if you needed a 700 scale score on STAR, we had a lot of kids score like a 690. And so there's a, I'm looking forward to how we kind of meet those students who are between the 40th or the 50th and the 75th percentile, that, that third quartile, so that we can push them over the edge, because I think that we can make these numbers look even a lot higher if we focus on and target some of those, some of those students. So as far as our action plan goes, one of the things that, that we feel is important is just continuing to explore ways how we can work with families and provide those resources so that it becomes that team, that village approach to support student learning. I think one of the things we noticed is, especially when students came in from a very non-traditional end of the school year, and as we had kids come back from remote learning, and we had a lot of students who had set foot in the school for a year, in some cases. And so our teachers did a great job with that communication, and I think that's one of those things that we took away, is we provided a lot of extra resources. Our teachers provided a lot of extra resources to families, and how can we continue and improve that process moving forward? So we continue to see that, build that strong foundation. Definitely highlighted the teachers a couple of times. We want to celebrate those successes and leverage the expertise in the great teaching that is going on in the building as we turn over some staff. We've had a large number of retirements at Southwest. And so there's a great opportunity there, but there's work to be done. And as I mentioned, that, that third quartile, that 50 to 75th percentile, how do we continue to move the needle? How do we continue to, you know, push, push and put the pedal down for, for our students? And the last thing was, I know, one of the ways that you can continue to move the needle is just continuing to build that culture of literacy. So how are we making sure that we're putting quality and interesting texts in front of our students? Because the research certainly shows that the more kids read, the better they do. And so that's on us to try to figure out how we reach all of our readers, even ones that are somewhat reluctant, and that's our charge. Any questions? Thank you.
All done? Thank you. I'm Laura. Lyons. Okay, so first, I want to acknowledge, and we talked about this, you know, this afternoon at our A.T. meeting. Northeast had one of the highest populations of students that were remote learners. So I will tell you, in the beginning of the school year, we were close to about 45% of our students remote, and even ending the school year, a little bit below 30%. So when I stand before you to look, to show you our numbers, I am extremely proud of our staff, of our students, and of our family, and we saw some tremendous growth. We capitalized on our K1, especially because we felt like we really wanted to work hard to close those gaps, those literacy gaps, and build those foundations for reading, because we know, you know, the further they fall behind, it's going to be harder, you know, to get them where they need to be to start to read, to learn. So I am super proud to present our numbers, especially like in, across the board. You can see, we saw some great.
Second grade, fabulous.
Some great growth. And again, I want to emphasize it was, you know, the resilience of the teachers and the resilience of the students that really committed to doing this. And we talk about, this is surface data, is what I would like to point out. So it's what we're presenting to you in terms of numbers, but this gives myself, our staff, the opportunity to dive deeper into really what we need to focus on and create some concrete, long-term, long-term and short-term goals to move forward. So we're super excited for this opportunity. You know, Northeast students lack a little bit sometimes in background knowledge and experiences. And I think that we, you know, now, me being the leader of that school, like, recognize that. So our approaches and our resources that we're going to use might be a little bit different, and I'm excited for the creativity of our teachers that are able to think outside the box and do what's best for students.
Your math is fabulous. It is on fire.
So math, you know, when I, when I first presented this data to the staff in the fall, people, I think, seemed a little defeated. It was kind of a, you know, it was, it was a very emotional time. And I said, this is our starting point together as a team. And, you know, if you trust me and we're going to move forward, we're gonna get to where we need to be. So we still have some goals set from here. But again, I could not be more proud. You know, fifth grade had a little bit of a dip, but we did have the most, you know, remote students at that time. But again, you can see that, you know, the growth has been. Second and fourth grade, because they doubled, I mean, it's really doubled. And the other thing I will tell you, I feel like that what happened at the turning point from winter to spring is, you know, we started working. We had our interventionists come back. We had our social worker, you know, hired. So I feel like we had the right support staff in place. And like I said, it was a, it was a team effort. So this next piece, you know, we're looking at our, you know, our students again, you know, on track, that long-term focus for SAT readiness. And both reading and math, you know, we look at this and I can tell you, so our second grade where they scored, you know, is a little bit lower. But everyone else made great growth, you know, they kind of, you know, you know, we have to, that, this is an opportunity to look at our curriculum and look to see where we're going and what other things that we need, supplemental things that we need to do to, you know, get them to the next, the next step. And so, Dr., I'm sorry, Mr. Martinez and I, we worked together, Assistant Principal, to create a partnership. So we want to offer these parents as partners, opportunities for school and home to come together, you know, just to strengthen that homeschool connection. And we, you know, we saw a great, a good turnout, but I want to see it, you know, more and more families participate. So we're going to be creative with that. And based on our data and our goals, you know, we'll offer some more opportunities for that to happen. And then we're still going to target our small group instruction. We, our staff used an instructional planning template this year, and it really helped to focus our, you know, have our students have focus skills and then hold our students accountable and hold our staff accountable by meeting and talking about their, their progress. So, and then I feel, just to add in a little acronym, because that's what education's all about. So something that we're going to focus on as a staff are great instructional practices. So we want to make sure that it's guided by the curriculum and learning standards. So kind of change the mindset that we're using the standards to drive our curriculum, that we are rigorous and research-based. So we're not just putting anything together that has to be meaningful, engaging and exciting. And then we want to assess continuously to make sure that we're on track. And then again, that tailored lesson planning template that we're going to continue to use because we found great success. Any questions? Thank you. Thank you for your time very much. Thank you, Mr. Sheldon. I was trying to work that in, but I was like, no, 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 I'm all, thank you.
You already have an acronym, right? W W M B D, right? What? Before even diving into the numbers, I think, as the last elementary school, I think it's important to just even think about the fact that we did this year what few districts even attempted to do. Teachers did it with synchronous instruction on top of that. And so to see growth like this in spite of those challenges and maybe in fact even because of some of the great work that was done doing that. Because we definitely saw the difference and the importance of in-person learning. Like in disaggregating this data, you definitely saw the students who were at school in person, those who could be there and understanding that some couldn't. Really benefited from that in-person instruction. And it was just absolutely critical to their, not only their social, emotional wellbeing, but to their academic achievement as well. And so just incredibly proud of our staff and really looking forward to next year when school will look even that much more normal. So very excited about the growth, excited to see the median. I think that's an important metric to even talk about a little bit more in detail in terms of watching that increase. For example, like for our, the second graders is a great example, going from 34 in the, in the winter to 55. That means that when you talk about the mean, which is just the average, right? Well, that might mean you took your kids who were real high and just pushed them a little bit higher and moved the overall average, right? With the median, with half the kids being above it, that means you're moving kids throughout that range. And so just really incredibly proud to see those numbers going up. And I think it would be even more pronounced because, and I get this as a new parent myself, when I watch my daughter struggling with something, I like want to help her a lot. And maybe more than I should. And I think that some of our parents who were sitting next to their children in the fall, watching them maybe struggle on a standardized test, you know, like, do you think it's A? Do you think it's B? Do you think it's C? C looks good. Or I mean, it could be D, but choose whichever one you want. And so I think the baseline would be even that much lower and the growth, growth that much more pronounced, right? And that's not to take anything away from our parents. We couldn't have done it without them. It's just an understandable artifact of this, of this model. So very proud of our growth in reading. Also similarly in, in math as well, second grade again, really profound growth there. I think third grade is where you see the, the artifact I was just talking about with like a really high starting point after a year of not being in school. But then, you know, that's, that's not really reflective of, I think, where they truly started. But very proud of, of the growth and the number of kids who are achieving, meeting or exceeding, going up across the board as well. Not to pay no mind to that as well, if you look at from the start to the finish, every single grade level in math, the percentage that are meeting and exceeding the standards has gone up from the fall to the spring. So very proud of that broad-based growth in math, which is sometimes harder. And then I think this is a great starting point of the conversation on this metric to really think about the fact that, you know, we can talk about as a grade level team, what we're doing. But to keep in mind the, the long-term goal of making sure our children are successful in secondary ed, but post-secondary ed as well, whatever that looks like. And I think we just need to continue to come back to this idea of how are our students doing over the long term? And I'm sure as we continue to follow this metric, we can sort of see cohorts as they move from one year to the next. Are we getting more and more students on track for success? And it was a little more wow factor last time, but it's still fun. Very similar to my colleagues in terms of the things that we're focused on. I think one thing that I really want to emphasize is the parent outreach. As Carrie mentioned, with the demographics of our schools, we have a lot of parents who are absolutely committed to their children's education, but might work the second or third shift. And it's very difficult for them to be able to sit down in the same way with their students if they are literally coming home to work from work to take their children to school and then going to sleep or some variation of that. And I want to make sure we're supporting our families with the tools and techniques that they need. We're going to be using Class Dojo across the board in our school next year. And I'm looking forward to really meeting our parents virtually, who can't come to a literacy night or can't come to some of the other events at the school just because of their own schedules, but are excited to get text messages and little videos and things that could show them what their children are working on. And more importantly, just how to support them, just concrete, specific things that they can do. Whether it's a question you ask when you're reading a book with your student or different site words to work on. Those little touch points to really bridge the family and the school, I think, are going to be important to our long-term success. Thank you very much.
Still wow factor. Still wow factor.
Oh, absolutely. You might even say it's not just great, it's greater.
All right, Panther, bring it home.
Good evening. All right. So as we look at the reading data for Central, we see that there were gains in sixth and seventh grade. Eighth grade, there was a bit of a dip and it really shows that really some of the struggles of teaching during the pandemic. You know, remotely, you know, when these kids get to middle school, they're really diving into the novels. And so we had novels in the front for kids to pick up who were remote and in person. But you know, there's nothing like being in the classroom with a teacher and being able to go through those various strategies that I teach every day. So, you know, it was a bit of a struggle at the eighth grade level. But, you know, Mr. Swilly, Kenny and I, we all see a challenge that we're looking forward to next year and getting those scores looking even better. All right. And in math, we saw gains in all three grades. And I really want to, you know, if I had a head, I'll take it off today to the teachers, the math teachers, who did a great job. As, you know, who for our students are really being able to, you know, hone in on some of those concepts that pertains to math at all three grade levels.
They like really rock those. Yeah, that's great. Had some great games, sixth grade.
And as far as SAT reading and math readiness, definitely saw gains at those three levels. And, you know, some of the takeaways from looking at these numbers is that really the importance of data and just how putting it out in front of the teachers and, you know, and seeing where those students who are on the border and what things we can do to really get them to the meets or even above if they're on that cusp of meeting. And even going beyond that, helping those two who are also low, but you know, just really putting the data out there. But we definitely see gains here too. And then the action plan to improve student achievement culture is the study skill classes during the day, which we implemented this year for students who are remote and in-person to assist them with just some struggles that they were having academically. After school touring for math and reading, three days, three days per week. Central Connect for students needing SEL support, you know, which is another big one that makes sure we have those programs that are able to respond to students that they need, that they need. Our curriculum instruction assessment, I continue tier one data conversations, planning and improve current instructional practices. I mentioned before, really putting that data out there, being able to look at it and dissect it and say, what improvements can we make and where? Team planning, which some of our teachers, due to the way our schedules were, they were not able to have too much team planning and really meet with their teams to see what improvement or how the eighth grade teacher can help the seventh grade teachers, you know, and just have those conversations. Lesson planning for responsive instruction, you know, as we think about how to know what type of differentiation we put into our lessons and different modifications. And P L Cs for data review. So it really goes back to just being able to look at our data, plan better, and, you know, teach it.
I know this makes me unpopular, but I'm really excited for August. I know nobody else wants to hear that, but hearing all of you and how enthusiastic everybody is about making these changes and moving forward and, and giving these kids the support they need and bringing them back from, you know, everybody in person who can be. I'm excited. I know they're not excited, but I'm excited. So take your night in. Everybody gets a break, but I, wow. Just the enthusiasm and the ideas that are obviously going to come to fruition next year with our students are just, it's just phenomenal. So thank you very much. Like I said, no kid wants to hear that right now, but I'm excited, so.
At this time, Dr. Vida Numa will talk about the consolidated plan that's been submitted to the state.
Each year, the Illinois State Board of Education requires a school district to submit a comprehensive plan, which helps us to synthesize all of the information that the principals presented to you specifically in the action plan. Forty-page document that I sent to you, right? So I'm just going to highlight some of the components of the plan. So we are required to complete a district needs assessment. And we gather data throughout the school year, our STAR assessment data, access data. Submit or survey our parents in terms of their training needs as well as our staff through the ARO needs assessment. The five essential surveys, an additional piece of data that we look at. And so we look at that data and identify what are our priorities moving forward? And how are we going to use our federal grant funds to support students holistically in their achievement, both in reading and math, as well as their social, emotional growth? And so based on the conversations that we've had during A C, during meetings, committee meetings, we have identified that we really do need to focus on tier one instruction. And we will use our grant funds to do that. We also need to shore up some additional tier two and tier three interventions for students that principals talked about, small group instruction. And so we will use grant funds to do that. This past year, we had an S E L assessment committee, which identified a tier one survey that we will administer to all students. And our, all of our staff will need training on that. So we'll use funds for that as well. And then we have a new position, our interventionist coaches will require some training on the school year as well. And then the last piece of this is the parent training component. And we identify how we're going to engage parents meaningfully in their students' learning as well. So we need you to approve this plan so they can release the funds to us. And so I respectfully ask that you do so when that time comes. So thank you for your time.
If I may continue. This is a resolution supporting in-person instruction. And we are still waiting for details that they're trying to work out. But this is in part the resolution from the Illinois State Board of Education. On May 19th, 2021, the Illinois State Board of Education unanimously adopted a resolution supporting in-person learning that supports the Illinois State Superintendent of Education, Dr. Carmen Ayayala, in making the following declaration after the conclusion of this current academic year, subject to favorable public health conditions at that time. Beginning with 21, 22 school year, all schools must resume in-person learning for all student attendance days, attendance days, provided that the code that's cited in the resolution, remote instruction be made available for students who are not eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine and are under a quarantine order by a local public health department or the Illinois Department of Public Health. There's several Q and As that will follow. However, the mandate is clear. The mandate is so that no one can have an idea that we will start remote. With some exceptions, school districts in Illinois will be in-person beginning with the 21, 22 school year.
You know, I have a question. I'm so sorry. So kids who are under 12 and the parents still don't want them going into school, that's no longer a choice.
There may be exceptions, but we're waiting for that to.
Right, like if they couldn't get the vaccine, right?
That's right.
But if they are just still not wanting their children in school.
And they're fine. Just say that they're not the reason.
We are not, we do not have to provide remote instruction for those families.
There's more information. We thought we would get more information.
Yeah, I was hoping.
However, that did not happen, but we are expecting clarification, more information by the end of the month. But the mandate though is very, very clear as to what if districts even thought about starting remote, they can take it off the table because it will be an in-person start with some exceptions.
Next item is the approval of the architectural firm recommendation. So give you a little history back in the day, back a long ago. We had an architectural firm that did all of the major construction and renovation of buildings. They were an incredible firm to work with. I worked with them subsequent districts. I know other people that have worked with this firm. We had 13 suppliers. We got Mr. Hennessy and Mr. Decker to review all the packets. So thanks to Lisa Galick too, for putting the R and B together. It worked as a committee reviewed all the packets and looking for qualifications. Back in about 2003, 2004, the decision was made not to keep the architect who was the architect of our district. Since that time, there's been a series of architects and there's been frustration from our directors of building and grounds, our custodial staff, our maintenance.
Directors of Building and Grounds, our custodial staff, our maintenance staff. So we interviewed and looked targeted specifically for somebody that understands our buildings, know how to. Knows how to move our buildings forward, right? And um understands the importance of relationships with the district, that it's not just. You know, we have a meeting, we ask you to put a plan together and it never happens. So back in two thousand and three, I was superintendent of Forest. Patrick Bresnan came out to see me and he had just been told that he was no longer the architect of record for Evergreen Park twenty four. He said, what can I do? I said, I'm not sure. I'm, you know, I'm not there. I'm not, you know. And he said, it's the biggest loss of my career, not being affiliated with one twenty four. He said, as a young architect, I I came out and I worked with, and he had a wonderful relationship. We had weekly meetings, right? Such attention to details, he came out again when we interviewed, that this is the firm that loves our district. And unfortunately, we had a period that we didn't have them as architects. So I'd like to introduce Leggett Architects. If you could tell a little bit about the firm and say to you, welcome home.
Thank you so much. My name is Patrick Bresnan, the president and CEO of Leggett Architects and this. Dr. Longo pointed out, um when I first interviewed, one of my first interviews ever, uh with the district was um. In nineteen eighty nine and we began working in nineteen ninety. And so for about twenty two, twenty three year period of time there. Was able to help the district through a strategic plan that really took on. All the facilities, each of the buildings, prioritize them and undertook those over a long period of time. With me along the way was Tom Kikta, who's our project manager, project architect and project manager during that time period. Since then, our Leggett Architects has grown from a firm of about eighteen to twenty people to seventy five people today. We're serving uh multiple counties and uh across three states in the Midwest. Our project teams work, just like we always said, in small teams, studio based, and uh the people you see. At the beginning are the people you see throughout the relationship. And that's really what I think kept the. Leggett Architects and Evergreen Park working so strongly together was that that person-to-person uh connection and relationship. And it's not about any individual one project or, you know, it's about the the total effort. So we've really pride ourselves on working with the district and developing uh learning environments that can help teachers and students. Be empowered to learn and and excel. And uh Robin Randall is here as well. She leads our research practice. And Adam Quigley, so I'm gonna ask them to introduce themselves. We'll start with Robin as far as what their experience is and their commitment to the district.
Thank you, Patrick. And it's so wonderful to be working with Patrick and Tom and really bring this back to them. It was a very heartfelt uh relationship. So. Um I have had the privilege of working with these people for eight years. I am the director of the education practice, which is. Over fifty percent of what we do is taking care of school districts just like you. And what I'll say is, we're in the neighborhood right now. Um we're working with Arrow Special Needs Cooperative. Working on their new therapeutic center and we're working with Burbank School District as well. And this is the Burbank team. Adam is uh working very well with that group and so he's in the neighborhood and he's he's there. But we interviewed with this team from Burbank and they can attest that. Adam, Tom and I are on weekly calls with them and and a part of the team. So. Uh we'll be a part of your team and we'll see a lot of you and just thrilled with the, I'm just gonna put it out there, the women leadership in this district. I'm thrilled that Jenna has come here. We are working in Troy where she was and I'm thrilled to be a part of this team. So thank you for welcoming us so. So genuinely, appreciate it.
Tom Kikta, I've been with the company as Pat mentioned, I've been with the company for thirty years, over thirty years. And uh this was actually one of the first districts I worked with when I came to Leggett Architects. So. As I mentioned, it did hurt a lot when we were out. Ten years ago, whenever it was, we worked with the with the district for for twenty years at that point and. We are all about the long-term relationships. Several districts that we've been working with for thirty, forty years now. And so this is, we're in it for the long haul with the district. We're just really happy to be back.
So I'm Adam Quigley. I haven't been around Leggett as long as uh Patrick or Tom has, but I've got over twenty years of experience. It was really great to hear from all of the principals, you know, the passion that they have for all their individual schools. And I'm just excited to be able to uh try to align some of your facilities with your educational ambitions. So. Thanks a lot. So forward to be working with all of us.
So with the team, we're excited to be here and uh continue that that long-term relationship and uh we're a moment to know. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
That concludes staff reports. At this time, Mr. Kostek will come with the business office report. Oh please, have a good day.
Kostek's last, his last uh presentation.
Well, I'm a little embarrassed to be standing here because for the last two months I've been running around. Saying the sky is falling, our levies are not being collected. We could have a potential train wreck on our hands and. I'm wrong. But that's a nice problem. Traditionally, we collect heavy in February, March, and very little in the winning months of our fiscal year. This month alone in May, where we traditionally collect about eighty-five thousand dollars worth of levy money, we collected about a million dollars. So all of my problems and concerns completely went away. Uh we are actually. On track for collecting more levy money as a percentage of the levy extension than we did the prior year. So. Never mind. We're we're on track. Uh so all the component parts of uh our revenue are very favorable. Then when we get to the expense side, uh and I look at the various component parts of our expenses. And many elements of our expenses are running favorable to my budget. So overall, I would think when you've got positive revenues and. Savings on your expenses, you should have a break even here. A pretty cer- pretty good certainty. Right now, even though we're ninety-one percent of the way through the year. You have to keep in mind that the biggest element of our expenses are gonna come through in June when. Uh all of our summer money that we pay our teachers for the month of June, July and August. Get recorded in June. So that that will flood through and Eric will have to report that. But it still should be uh very favorable to budget. You should be just in fine shape. Any quiz questions on the expense side or revenue side of the operation? Some of the other things I kinda wanted to bring to your attention, uh in your packet is the engagement letter for the new auditors. Certainly, I'll prove the resolution for that. They are coming out next week to start the process. So we're looking forward to that. Also, there's a resolution in there for PTAB that has to do with our lawyers, Francic. They do all of the. Contesting of requests for PTAB adjustments and they're usually for like large. In this uh stores and banks and things of that nature. It's gotta be over a hundred thousand dollars for them to jump in. So uh they've been doing a great job and I hope you approve them. Uh and then also in your package is the Arrow budget. So uh that's for something to review. This is my last board meeting. Hi. Don't wanna start crying like all those athletes do when they say they're retiring. I do wanna say I appreciate all your support. And I'm gonna let for Deb to handle it. Alright, thank you very much, guys.
And we like those nice surprises. I much prefer those kinds. So thank you.
So we went up to bid this year for uh for next school year for food, paper and milk supplies. And these are my recommendations. It's a consolidation of all of the bits that were submitted and the final uh costs that were submitted. So my recommendation for our food items is to split the bid between Oregon's Foods and Wilkins Foods. The reasoning for this is because on some of our. Center of the plate food items, Wilkins did bid lower for those items. So I'm suggesting that we give them the bid for five different manufacturers and then the rest of the food bid will go to Oregon's Foods. For paper, um that was, it's hard to see. I did highlight which ones I was recommending and for paper, we just went with. Lowest bidder that can supply all of the items that were on the bid, so that would go to warehouse direct. The other bidders were missing some items, key important items. And then for milk, um my suggestion is to go with, or my recommendation is to go with Far South distributors. They are a little higher than the lowest bidder. However, the lowest bidder is not firm pricing. There is the potential for that price to increase monthly based on uh the cost of raw milk. So uh to stick with the firm price. Recommended, we go with Far South distributors who've had in the past and uh have been uh had a nice collaboration. So. So that's it with my food bid. And then as far as an update, we're starting our community feeding tomorrow. Very excited about that. So we'll see how it goes. We're offering that every Tuesday and Thursday throughout the summer. And then next week, we're starting our summer school feeding at Northwest and at Middle School.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I'm so, I'm so excited that our kids will have food this summer and they're able to provide a great service to like our community. So yeah, likewise.
No other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I'm back up again.
You thought you were done.
Another thing that's in your board package is the board resolution as it relates to potential working capital uh bond offering. So PMA Securities, Tammy will present that and uh you can ask her any of the tough questions.
That felt good too, didn't it?
I'm ready.
Thank you.
Good to see you again. Good to see you too. Thanks again for so much of your time last month. I have an updated presentation. I don't know if it's up on the screen. Or everyone has it at their place. Do you have it with you? Okay, great. I can, I can just refer to the slides as we go through them if that would be easier because the presentation really isn't that long. So when I left last month, you gave me one pretty important charge and that was to come back with an updated debt structure based on. The authorization of up to six million dollars of working cash bonds. So I have that for you. And I also have an updated timeline, so you can get a sense of what's going to occur over the next few months. So if you go to slide two of the presentation, just for a minute, wanted to talk about the bond market. We talked about it in pretty good depth last month. So I'm here to tell you this month that actually interest rates are a little bit better. So that's what we were hoping for, that we would continue to see some, at least some stability. When actually they've come down a little bit. So again, that just bodes well for you as you tee up to get some bonds here in the next couple of months. Let's go actually to slide four because it's the picture of what's on slide three and I'm happy to go back to slide three and talk numbers in greater detail. But I wanted you really kind of visualize slide four because the concept we've talked about last month. Was to structure it for again, up to six million dollars, but allow for a drop. In your annual debt service payments beginning in levy year twenty twenty four. The takeaway I got last month was six million dollars. If you go with that amount, will enable you to accomplish a great deal of work. You should be able to do that over the next few years. So then we get to twenty four, that three-year period ends. And if you have more projects, you can layer in more debt without in a big increase. In what the annual debt service payments of the district will be. So you can see that we accomplished that in the picture. And with that structure, these bonds issued this year would be paid off in levy year twenty eight or calendar year twenty nine. So you're looking at a roughly eight-year bond issue. If you go to the prior slide and if you feel like looking at this later with a glass of wine at home. We built in current market rates and added point two five percent. Again, we're being conservative. The rate would be still around a one point four percent. So still an incredibly low estimate of what the rate might be. Depending on where things are when you go into the market. So if you look at the column, it's the fourth from the left that's shaded. There's a circle at the bottom. It shows a figure of six point six one three million. If you see that, that's our estimate back. And what would it cost you to borrow six million? In other words, the current estimate is you'd have about six hundred and thirteen thousand dollars of interest cost to borrow six million. So that's pretty awesome.
Yeah, that is.
We'll hope that rates cooperate over the next couple of months. I'm I'm pretty optimistic. We're gonna continue to see some stability in the market. Any questions on that so far? Let's go to slide five, just to give you a sense of timeline. So as Tim mentioned, tonight's a big step. You have two resolutions before you declare your resolution of intent to issue up to six million dollars of working cash bonds. And a resolution to call a public hearing at your board meeting in July. And much like the hearings you have for your budget or your tax levy every year, you just give the public the opportunity to provide written or oral testimony. The other thing I'll ask you to do that night is to approve the selection of an underwriter slash placement agent for the sale of your bonds. I think I talked last month that as your financial advisor, PMA will prepare a request for proposals on RFP to numerous firms. We will ask those proposals to come in right after the Fourth of July holiday. We will analyze them and I'll provide a written recommendation for that July twenty first board meeting. Underwriter means we might sell the bonds to a really wide universe of investors. Placement agent means that firm might help us identify, maybe just one local bank. And ultimately, part of the recommendation I'll provide in July will say to you, this is the method we recommend to you. Because we want to make sure to get the lowest possible cost for the district. And if we go with the placement approach. That means potentially you won't have to have a credit rating, so we avoid that cost. The legal fees are lower. Again, just trying to minimize the cost to the district. So I'll have an answer for you on that in July. Then at your August board meeting, you'll be asked to adopt a parameters resolution for the sale of the working cash bonds. And you can remember from our conversation last month, it could be up to six million. If you want an amount that's less than that in that resolution. You can certainly do that. But these initial steps, we wanna make sure we've got the maximum amount covered. Okay? And then finally, we're slating the sale of your bonds on August twenty third. And then you'll close on the transaction and actually perceive the proceeds for projects by the middle of September. Any questions on the timeline or where we're at, or if you are good with the debt structure, any concerns about any of that? I'm here to answer those questions.
Hearing it now, that is much easier for us, or right? Yes, it's like, oh, I know, she's talking about, hey, we talked about that. I got that. That's good. So Eric, so the money will be available by September thirteenth.
Exactly. Right. And of course, the six million dollars includes the almost one and a half million dollar amount for Arrow, right? That's part of that total. I should have.
Yes, for the two fingers.
Yeah.
Excellent. Wow. Do you have any questions? I was busy writing. Sorry about that. Gotta write it down while it's in there, you know? So there's lots to think about. This was very helpful. Uh and I think it was good for it to soak in for a little bit. Now we have it really uh solidified with the dates and how it will fall out. So we can see how it's all gonna work out with the other things that we have coming up. It works together, doesn't it? So absolutely, this is really, really helpful. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you. Yes, thank you for coming out. I appreciate it. Yes, it's bad, right? Is it been meeting before? Yes, you prepared us well. What you did. Thank you very much.
Understand what was going on. Even though that night we were like, whoa.
I know, so much to swim by.
Yeah.
Yeah. See, is, is what I see. Yeah, so. So Deb, I believe you've already given us your update as well, right? So if you have more to say, you're always welcome. But so are there any?
Only one for Kim Allen.
I'll read the other two. So.
Did you give Claudia a happier note?
Yes. Actually, I asked her if she would be willing. And I'll read the other two.
Excellent. Thank you.
We did have three individuals submit public comments today between eight and three, as this are the parameters when we can't invite the public to our board meetings. Alex spoils us. And I did not print them in his absence, so please forgive me. And I'm going to be reading them instead from my phone. So I will read two of these public comments. And then. So. The first public comment that we have, I'm gonna give this a little clarity. So is from Margaret Smith. To District 124 School Board, my name is Margaret Smith and I've been employed by the district since 2003. Started my food service career at Northwest and now I'm at Southeast. I've worked 18 years for District 124 and have always been a dedicated employee. I've seen lots of changes through my, my career, some good and some bad. Still, the district was always good to me and my family. But now, after all those years of devoted service, the District 124 School Board wants to stop my health insurance. Why? Why? Health insurance is a necessity for me and I need my Blue Cross Blue Shield HMO in order to survive at my age. It keeps me alive with doctor appointments, medication, tests, labs, work, and eye vision and dental. Health insurance is a necessity and I can't live without it. I cannot afford other insurances like Cobra on what District 124 pays me. Please let me get my health insurance, please. Please, I've been a good employee all these years and now this is how District 124 repays me. Please don't take away my health insurance. Signed, Margaret Smith. Our second public comment is from Joanna Hughes. Good evening, superintendents and the Board of Education members. My name is Joanna Hughes and I am currently the Lunchroom Site Manager at Northwest School, hired full-time two short months ago on April 1st, 2021, after two and a half years of part-time employment in the same capacity. Quite by surprise, on Thursday, June 10th, I was notified via email in no less than three sentences of my loss of critical health insurance benefits. Being offered these benefits was a significant factor deciding, deciding factor in accepting the position. I am a longtime resident of Evergreen Park and my youngest two children have attended district schools. I have an invested interest in this community and our school district. Under these unprecedented times, I agreed to take the full-time position and agreed to work all of last summer during the COVID pandemic to ensure our food service program was beneficial to all students. I performed the duties and responsibilities of the position with the utmost professionalism and dedication. This vote to cancel health benefits will without a doubt negatively impact myself and family. I, along with a small group of fellow food service coworkers, are non-union and as such have no one but ourselves to raise concerns over this latest vote. While we each have been recognized within our respective schools, received a certificate of recognition from the school board and have been highlighted in an end-of-the-year email calling us unsung heroes, thanking us for our contributions to the district's successes and our partnership serving the children and our families, quietly our health benefits have been taken away. It is with these parting words that I respectfully request the board to consider revisiting the decision and be open to a discussion with compromise in mind. All options should be waived before rescinding such crucial health insurance benefits. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Joanna Hughes. I guess. Definitely. Pronouncing her name right. Am I pronouncing her name right? School Board officials, I have worked in this school district for eight years now, starting out as a dishwasher in the kitchen. Currently, I'm working in the kitchen still and recently found out that there was a meeting behind closed doors regarding whether or not the insurance for the kitchen employees would be terminated. We found out just a few days before summer break that we will no longer get health insurance starting January 1st, 2022. Because we work just a few hours short of the required amount of time, we are unable to spend extra time to get insurance. Many of us have long tenure in the district and feel very hurt by this decision. We even came in and worked almost every day during the pandemic, risking our lives. In this day and age, health insurance is very important and we would hope that the district would reevaluate their decision to at least either allow us to put in the extra time to pay full-time. This is nothing more than 30 minutes each day. Or grandfather and those of us who have been loyal district employees, thank you for your consideration. So we don't have the opportunity to respond to all public comments, but this is important and we wanted to be able to respond globally. So truly thank you to our staff members who are willing to share their concerns tonight. First of all, I think it's important to once again thank and recognize our employees for their contributions to the district, especially as it relates to their additional responsibilities brought on by the pandemic. We are so appreciative of their efforts. As a board, we make many tough decisions that are not taken lightly. The decision to make changes to the benefits packages of part-time employees was one of several financial-related moves the district needed to make in order to move forward in a fiscally responsible way, which will allow us to continue to offer a high-quality education to all of our students. In addition, we have an interest in keeping our programs local. Without making changes, it would put us in a situation where we would have to outsource the services, which are running a deficit. Yes, decisions such as this one are difficult to make, but we want to make sure we are able to keep our hard-working employees employed. Thank you again for everyone who reached out with their comments. Are there any other public comments? So Katie pulled me aside when we thanked them. She has six children at home. So that should have been like, we could have known that at the very beginning and we would have made that change accordingly. But sick kids, I think we can all agree, always win. And so she very subtly and graciously said that they would not be speaking as they did their part and then went on their way. So we will not be hearing from them this evening. I believe that brings us to our board reporters. Okay, you reported last, last month and then. This has really kept some by fire, I know. So thank you.
Well, we have not had another regular governing board meeting. So the, some of the items in our packet were things that Dr. Canell followed up with governing board and provided like additional information. So, so some of that information was already highlighted specifically, like the description of the architecture firm's presentation. But a couple new points of interest, like Mr. Kasecki mentioned, is the fiscal year 2022 budget. And Dr. Canell was especially pleased that the increase was only a fraction of a percent, just 0.53% for their, for their operating budget as compared to last year. But also he mentioned in some of the materials that are provided that there's going to be a public hearing for that, for that budget on July 19th, which will be followed by our regular governing board meeting, where he would like to adopt that budget. But he does need six member districts to approve it first. So that's one of our action items this evening to approve their budget. The other new bit of information that came up is Dr. Canell requested the early release of bid packages for the new building. So specifically, he wanted bid packages released for site utilities, excavation, concrete panels, the things to kind of get the foundations rolling. He emphasized that the benefits to this early bid release would be a savings and that it doesn't oblige Arrow to start construction. So those were the benefits that he highlighted. But as you can see in the packet, that did in fact pass. There were, there were districts who were opposed, including ours. So, okay. And then the last thing is in the packet, he provided a summary of the teams involved in the planning process and a description of the steps taken for the new building. So that's still, of course, a big point about this, but mainly the fiscal year budget and the early bids were the, was the new information. And then we'll meet again July 19th.
Just in time for another report for our July 21st meeting. Thank you. This really is a lot all at once, just starting. You're doing great, so thank you. And keeping us all informed. They're very busy. It's, there's a lot going on here. So you've been very good about communicating with us as well, so thank you so much. Okay, thank you.
So I do have a question though.
Or I'm sorry.
We, you, you guys voted nay that we did not want to do the early release bids. But it looks like. Like the executive board wanted to.
Yeah. Dr. Lanko, could you address that a little bit?
So we voted, our district voted no, along with two other districts, to vote no, because they have not secured the money from the state of Illinois.
Okay.
They have counted on Mike Madigan, the driver for funding. And the concern is, we're not a state site, we're not a state of Illinois site. Arrow is a.
Right.
So. They fund state projects, they didn't fund an individual project. Now, the, a few of the board of directors, as well as Dr. Canell, have continued to lobby. But in their last meeting, the governor didn't even seem to be aware of the project to Dr. Canell's concern. So they've talked about building the shell of a building and not being able to furnish it or build classrooms inside. So we thought that that was not a good use of.
Why would you want to build something and not? Right, okay.
So we voted no, along with two other elementary districts.
But then the governing board voted a majority no.
So there was an emergency note that went out asking for our, you know, our various board members throughout the co-op for a meeting and asked for a date that would work, a date and time that would work. We submitted a date and time and they did it at a different time.
Arrow had a meeting at a different time, even though they had.
Even though they knew when our board member was built.
Right. So I mean, I think he did communicate in the email that he needed six members to be able to. At least six members to attend the meeting. And he offered a selection of three dates. And I replied with the dates that I was available and he scheduled it on a different day.
And totally separate from the three?
No, no, it was one of the three. It was one of the three. So it was based on the other districts' responses, I assume, but.
It still failed, though. We're not going forward with it.
It's, no, it passed. They're going forward with it.
The minority of the districts passed it. The minority of the districts voted against it.
So I was reading it wrong earlier. Okay.
Three voted against.
Thanks. I'm sorry.
Only one district was recorded as absent, so.
Gotcha. Thank you. Thanks for clarifying that. I'm sorry.
But it does appear on this letter that the people who are named are a combination of executive board and governing board members. So that is a little bit confusing, that the two boards are kind of merged on this letter.
Yes, I, I just didn't, okay, that's fine. So they want to build the shell without having the money to finish the building?
They want to release the bids for the shell, for the excavation and the steel. And I, and he emphasized that there's no obligation to start building.
I guess, would, would it be a good thing then? Because then we would definitely nail down the price, so if it.
That's exactly what Dr. Canell is doing.
Because of the price of all those things going up?
Those prices expire. There's a time on those.
Oh, okay.
So you have issue.
Right.
Based on product, right? But.
Because the prices could also go down and we'd be locked in there.
That's correct. But it's time-sensitive. I mean, they only.
It's time-sensitive, okay.
Let's make it clear, we believe that we need programs for kids with disabilities that support them in excellent educational settings. There is no doubt about that. The issue is, is that the promise that was made is no longer available. No time, we don't know if it's gonna get approved one year, two years, three years, or ever.
And yet we committed to half of the money already without being.
From local districts.
Right. Yes, from our districts, the, what is it, six, did we say?
Okay. And to be perfectly clear, we're talking about a significant amount of money.
Well, 50%. Yeah, half.
50 million dollars.
50 million dollars.
And we're looking for 25 million. The districts supporting the member districts, 25 million. And the share, 25 billion. And going out for bid is based on building a 50 million dollar building. I mean, I can't say any different. They're not scaling back to a 25 million dollar building. They're asking permission to go out to bid and expect for a 50 million dollar building with 25 million dollars in the bag.
Yep, okay.
So we just, we just want our boards to know that this is. And, and we did, as we're trying to be good stewards of the store, how do you build a 50 million dollar building with 25 million dollars?
And then how long does it sit empty? Where we also need like protection of assets. You figure you start building something, you can't finish. The longer it sits there, the bigger, the potential for. Yeah, for destruction of it too, because it just doesn't make sense.
They're still trying to get the money.
They are. They're working.
I'm telling y'all where they're going to get the money. I've been saying it for months. They're coming back to us and asking us for another, the other half. And it's the only way they are gonna get that building built, in a timely manner to service our kids.
Just our observation, these buildings need attention.
I know. And I'm just saying.
We have, we have several children with disabilities in our buildings that need good facilities. We need bathrooms at Central.
No, I know.
Elevator at Central.
Yeah.
Our elementary buildings need more learning spaces that are creative for kids.
I don't disagree with you. There's, I agree. I, I, we need to also take a look at our own, our own structural buildings. But I'm saying Arrow's gonna come back. There's no way they are going to find 20, 25 million dollars out of the state of Illinois. Pritzker didn't even know we were on the horizon for this. And now we've got all this work invested. So we either need to suck it up, quite frankly, and, you know, figure out how we're gonna come up with another 1.7 that they're gonna need. Or we're wasting, I mean, we're giving them money to hold and.
His message to the governing board, I mean, just in the couple times I've met, is that he's optimistic about the state funding it and that he's gonna continue to pursue state funding.
He can be as optimistic as he wants, but we are coming off a pandemic with a lot of deficits in our, in our schools. And I mean, they can't even get a balanced budget in Illinois right now. How are they gonna find? We are not their problem. I just, you know.
It has been very disappointing for us.
It is.
To go to the meeting and to voice concerns and say, where are you gonna get it? And then districts say, well, that's okay.
We're just gonna go ahead and.
It's almost a pie in the sky kind of a place that is going to rain down. And we don't believe in rain. You have to have a real thing if you're going to. But all we can do is try to represent our district, be good stewards of the store. And we have made it known.
It is fiscally irresponsible, irresponsible to me and my. You wouldn't build a house like that at your own house. You wouldn't say, well, I got half the money. And the builder say, of course the builder's gonna say, well, I'll build the shell for you. You don't care. I mean, that, that just doesn't make sense. Who does that? Oh my God. So they're gonna come back and ask more next time, because they're gonna.
That isn't even on the table at this point. They're, they're optimistic about lobbying the money.
Yeah, I do not have any optimism. Based on the. Based on the fact that where the handshake was made and the promise was made, then, yeah, I just think it's very. Sketchy, yeah.
And just to clarify with me both later, it's on the budget and not about destruction.
No, I know.
Separate those two things.
Yes, I will.
No, I mean, we need to.
Oh, no, I, oh, yeah, I can, of course I can.
We're going to go down that path, we need to understand that.
But I think it needs to be.
I understand, but what we're going on is the fiscal year budget, academic year budget, and not necessarily the money.
Oh, no, absolutely, I just, it needs to be on record that we are not in favor, I, I don't think we should be in any favor.
So, we are on to. We are on to. We are on to board policy, which was, uh, per Ms. Raisin. Very good. So, take this one, please. It was pretty quick and dirty. There haven't been any updates since December, so, you know, there's only one kind of major thing that's a shakeup. We are anticipating, I understand, our wonderful retiring and incoming suits, that there's probably going to be an influx of new policies coming. But for right now, the hot potato is the use of educational technologies, student data privacy and security. So to elaborate further, to ensure student safety and to adhere to the new law that's going to be enacted July first, we're going to be tightening our reins with the way that we use technology programs to further secure student data. We have to align all of the programs that we're currently using for SOPA, which is the compliance of, wait, we have to make sure we're in compliance with SOPA, and that acronym stands for Student Online Personal Protection Act. So, just to kind of drill down a little bit further, there are a lot of aids that our teachers use in order to support the current curriculum, and different technology programming, and a lot of those are free, so of course, we welcome our teachers to be created. Well, what happens, we all know what happens to us personally, too, is, as soon as you sign up for an app or you start using something, then they share the information. So what this new law is coming into play for is to say, we don't share student data, period. And so unless we can vet these different programmings to ensure that they're not doing that, we're not going to be able to continue to use those, so that's what this policy is about. And of course, that is our number one goal, is to make sure that our students and the technology uses that we are embracing will be safe for everyone. And that's it, that's all I got. First of all. Thank you, um. So when will you get your first big packet from the state? Don't know yet, we won't talk about that just yet.
Did you see Claudia's eyes?
I remember that, because when I was director of tech, uh, curriculum, not technology, not.
You know what you're on.
Communication, I was not Catholic nor was I that, um, but I used to update these things and put them on the website, so it was a very arduous, tedious process, but I used to read them.
It's very interesting.
It is interesting, that's how this is coming, so, yeah, more to come. Awesome, well, thank you both, um, thank you to the policy committee. Um, next is the district review team meeting, which was on March twenty, May, May. May twenty-fourth, sorry about that, in this very room, um, and there were snacks, it was lovely, um, in appreciation, which is wonderful, because, um, the district review team, I, I love coming to those meetings. They, it's very interesting and, uh, getting to hear from all the different, um, from all the different buildings and collectively having an opportunity to discuss things is just, uh, it's really, it's really, really great, so. Um, so, the big thing that came up in most of the questions, actually, was about our, um, power school and also curriculum. And, um, one of the things that I wanted to even mention, I, too bad that our union people aren't here, um, because truly, the, the theme that went through the, uh, the questions were about, um, how to better communicate with families when it comes to power school, how to use power school to its, um, ultimate, you know, to, to its best abilities, because there's all kinds of things that we aren't using yet, but we could be using. Um, how do we make sure that there's a curriculum that flows from grade level to grade level, um, and the teachers are excited about it, and they're asking these kinds of questions? So, maybe they're excited about August, too, but they don't want to, they don't want to say it either, I don't know. Uh, so that was, and I'm guessing a couple of these things that were also just kind of a timely thing, they were asking about sections of, of, um, school for each grade, et cetera, and that is. Certain result by this point, um, and then also maybe having education for parents on how to navigate the different, um, systems available to the students. Um, I mean, we won't be remote learning in the fall, but having educated parents helping with their children to navigate our systems, um, is absolutely going to benefit everybody, so. Um, so, yeah, it was a good meeting, it's always a productive meeting, um, and, uh, we will meet again. Not till August or September, so, that's, that's, uh, that's good, so, um, yeah, that was a good, it was a good, uh, productive meeting. Um, next we have the Mulprone Scholarship Update, you guys have the three applications from the students that were submitted, um, so, uh, I, I thought they all did a great job. Um, I always like reading the applications for the students, um, and how it works for our new board members. Obviously, a lot of kids are already signed up for camps, I mean, if you have kids at camp, you know how that goes, they, you know, when you sign up since March or April, but we would reimburse the per, the price, so that's what the scholarship works as, is to, um, encourage, you know, future participation and, and, uh, athleticism and sportsmanship, and also, uh, uh, so doing that now, um, and taking care of the, the things that they've already done for this year, so, comments? That's great. So. Um, we had, uh, we had three participants, there was kind of a range of applications, um, I've never heard a number per se, or a limit, obviously, we're not going to go crazy, um, I think that all three were very deserving, and because we have just three, that we can be generous, um, how would we feel about a thousand total, so divided by three? Does that seem reasonable? Or even, uh, like a nice round, um, I think three fifty, there was one that was a beach volleyball and also city side volleyball club season, um, there was, uh, EP camps, I love having it in the district, I think that's great, there was a D-one-twenty-four AA, so, like, that's pretty cool, too. Um, and, uh, yeah, I really liked, I liked being able to know that we were supporting kids to, to use our, um, programs as well. And then there was a gentleman here who is going, interested in, I think, every sport, so. I mean, good for him, but baseball, football, bundle, basketball, baseball, uh, basketball camp, so, um, would we be comfortable with maybe three fifty each? Is that great, I think?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Kasecki, how do you feel about that? I don't have my glasses on, did he win when I mentioned that number, I, I, I don't know. Um, but if everyone is comfortable with that, I think that that could be a great way to, like I said, to support these three students that, um, applied, and, uh, I love, I mean, excellent academics, like, straight A's, these are some, these are some really great kids, so I love being able to support them in that, so. Are we good with that?
Yep.
Wonderful. Um, when we get to that point, that's what we will be. That is, um, three fifty for each of those students.
Excellent.
It's a great scholarship, she was a great lady, and it's a way to honor her. I wish we would have more kids, I know it's coming off of pandemics, too.
I read the newsletters, I know.
I saw, oh, no, I.
Daily, Mr. Richmond, they put it out there, it was on the district newsletter, it was certainly in their announcements and things like that, so I know we talked about that at the last meeting, I'm like, there she was, she put it out there every time, so.
I was surprised it was only three.
Every year, it's only like three or four, yes, it's been very small.
Because you know they're all, right.
Involved in all these.
A couple of them wrote them themselves.
Do you think it's the timing, because, like you said?
Maybe do it earlier? We can do it earlier.
Yes, I do get kind of, you know.
Because, you know, they're always signing up.
They're all in, you know.
Yes, they're always signing up for.
When I think scholarship, for, in my brain, I always think, oh, I'm not going to apply for that because I want it to go to a, a family that's, you know, more well-deserving. And so it might be a lot of other parents thinking that they're yielding to someone else that might have a greater need, not knowing that everybody's kind of doing that. You know, because it is a great opportunity to take advantage of.
Yeah, definitely.
So, we just have to, I don't know, maybe express it, like, there are no prerequisites, there's no income.
No, it's not income-driven, yeah.
You know, your kid likes sports.
Yeah, maybe that is true, like, we should write something like that, like, it's not income-based.
It's not income contingent, and I think that there might be some of that going on.
No, I think you're right, that's great. Thank you. So earlier.
Earlier.
A little different spin on the marketing.
Yeah.
Um, not income-based, all things I can absolutely add into next March or April. Yeah, so, cool, okay, well, thank you for that.
Because our original goal, we were thinking, I remember years ago, when the first year we did it, we were thinking, like, we can at least fifty to a hundred. Yeah, and it was our first year, and, yeah, so, we didn't. I, you know.
And again, when we.
And then if it does grow like that, we could start doing lottery, so, I mean, it could still be eligible for anybody that meets the criteria.
So, awesome, thank you for that input as well, and, uh, I think that'll make it even better for next year, so, thank you, that's great. Um, we are now on to the consent agenda on our agenda. There is some reading I need to do at some point, too, so, um, I will start, so consent agenda item A is to approve the monthly transaction reports for May of two thousand twenty-one, approve the fund balance reports for May of two thousand twenty-one, approve the expenditure report and projected payroll report for June of two thousand twenty-one, approve revised board minutes from the regular meeting of April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, approve board minutes from the committee of the whole meeting of May twelfth, two thousand twenty-one, approve board minutes from the regular meeting of May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one, approve the closed session minutes from the regular meeting of May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one, approve destruction of closed session tapes from March of two thousand seventeen, and also the personal, personnel recommendations as listed on the agenda with a recall, a couple additions, a couple of FMLAs, and, um, a handful of resignations before the end of the year as well. So do I have someone to please make the first motion to approve Consent Agenda Item A?
I'll make that motion.
Thanks. And a second?
A second.
And a roll call? Claudia Parker?
Yes.
Rachel Merrickman?
Yes.
Judy Basin?
Yes.
Kim Leonard?
Yes.
Colleen Clemzak?
Yes.
Motion passed. Um, item number B, under our action items, is to approve the resignation of Mr. Patrick McKeever, board member, effective June second of two thousand twenty-one. Just as an aside, please know that we are interviewing currently for, uh, Mr. McKeever's position and also Mr. Malloy's position. Um, we have met with some outstanding, outstanding community members already, and, uh, in the first couple days of this week, and we will see four more tomorrow as well. Um, and I really, uh, I really do say that when they were outstanding, they were just great. Um, and also for Mr. McKeever, he stepped away for family reasons, and we absolutely support his decisions to need to be closer and, and more supportive of his, of his family, so. So, if I could please have, uh, someone make the first motion to approve the resignation for Mr. McKeever, uh, as of June second, two thousand twenty-one?
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
And a roll call? Rachel Merrickman?
Yes.
Claudia Parker?
Yes.
Kim Leonard?
Yes.
Judy Basin?
Yes.
Colleen Clemzak?
Yes.
Motion is passed. Um, action item number C is to approve the case manager for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year. Do I have a first, please?
I'll make the first.
And a second?
I'll second.
And a roll call? Kim Leonard?
Yes.
Judy Basin?
Yes.
Rachel Merrickman?
Yes.
Claudia Parker? Colleen Clemzak?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you. Um, uh, item, agenda item, excuse me, action item D is to approve our summer interns in technology. Um, if I could have a first motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
I'll make the second.
And a roll call? Rachel Merrickman?
Yes.
Kim Leonard?
Yes.
Claudia Parker?
Yes.
Judy Basin?
Yes.
Colleen Clemzak?
Yes.
Motion passed. Um, next is the agenda item E, uh, excuse me, consent item E is to approve the summer staff for food service. May I please have a first?
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
And a roll call? Judy Basin?
Yes.
Rachel Merrickman?
Yes.
Kim Leonard?
Yes.
Colleen Clemzak?
Yes.
Claudia Parker?
Yes.
Motion passed. Um, item number F is to approve the extremely long consolidated plan. Um, do I have someone to please make the first motion to approve that consolidated plan?
Oh, my gosh.
And a second?
I'll second.
And a roll call? Claudia Parker?
Yes.
Rachel Merrickman?
Yes.
Judy Basin?
Yes.
Kim Leonard?
Yes.
Claudia, uh, Colleen Clemzak?
Yes.
Motion passed. Next, item G is to approve the resolution supporting in-person instruction.
Oh, I'll make the first motion. Oh, my gosh, I will make the first.
Oh, getting on top of that one, and a roll call, please.
Who, who seconded it? Oh, yes, I. Kim Leonard?
Yes.
Claudia Parker?
Yes.
Judy Basin?
Yes.
Rachel Merrickman?
Yes.
And Colleen Clemzak?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passed.
Yeah. Um, item number H is to approve our new architectural firm, it was, uh, good to have them, I wish they could be here for this. Um, but may I have a first motion, please?
I'll make the first.
And a second?
I'll second.
And a roll call? Kim Leonard?
Yes.
Rachel Merrickman?
Yes.
Judy Basin?
Yes.
Colleen Clemzak?
Yes.
Claudia Parker?
Yes.
Motion passed. Excellent. Um, item number I is to improve, excuse me, approve the engagement letter from our new auditor. Uh, may I have a first, please?
I'll make the motion.
I'm first and seconding. Uh, Judy Basin?
Yes.
Rachel Merrickman?
Yes.
Claudia Parker?
Yes.
Kim Leonard?
Yes.
And Colleen Clemzak?
Yes.
Motion has passed. Excellent. Um, item number J, I have to read a long, right, that's the resolution, yep, okay, so I need to read the resolution that we are approving, um. What's that, no, not that one yet? Oh, I don't have to read it yet, okay, great, so, um, we are instead, item number J, approving, I got you, um, approving the resolution authorizing intervention and proceedings before the Illinois Property Tax Appeal Board and the Circuit Court.
I'll make the first.
And a second?
I'll second.
And a roll call, please? Kim Leonard?
Yes.
Rachel Merrickman?
Yes.
Claudia Parker?
Yes.
Basin?
Yes.
Colleen Clemzak?
Yes.
Motion passed. Excellent. Um, item K in our consent agenda, um, and again, just to clarify, this is.
Nothing.
The fiscal year budget.
Yes.
I want to clarify, absolutely, is to approve the fiscal year twenty-two Arrow budget, may I have a first, please?
I'll make the motion.
A second?
I'll second.
And a roll call? Judy Basin?
Yes.
Claudia Parker?
Yes.
Colleen Clemzak?
Yes.
Kim Leonard?
Yes.
Yes.
Rachel Merrickman?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Item number L is to approve the recommendation for the food, milk, and supply bid. May I have a first?
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
And a roll call?
Rachel Merrickman?
Yes.
Judy Basin?
Yes.
Kim Leonard?
Yes.
Claudia Parker?
Yes.
Colleen Clemzak?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Thank you. I have this novel to read, so I jumped the gun, but no, it's really only a page and a half like that. Items number M and N are actually both contained in this. Resolution that I'm going to be reading, and that is to, M is to approve the resolution declaring the intention. To issue six million dollars working cash fund bonds of the district for the purpose of increasing the district's working cash fund. And directing that notice of such intention be published in the manner provided by law. And then also the public hearing attached to that. That's item number N. So I'll walk through that again when I'm done reading. So. Okay, whereas, school district number one twenty four Cook County, Illinois, is a duly organized and existing school district created under the provisions of the law of the state of Illinois. And is now operating under the provisions of the school code of the state of Illinois and all laws. A mandatory thereof and supplementary thereto, including the local government debt reform act of the state of Illinois as amended and. Whereas, the Board of Education of the district intends to sell bonds in the amount of six million dollars for the purpose of increasing the working cash fund of the district. And whereas, the Bond Issue Notification Act of the state of Illinois, as amended, requires the board to hold a public hearing concerning the board's intent. To sell the bonds before adopting a resolution providing for the sale of the bonds. Now therefore be it, and it is hereby resolved by the Board of Education of School District number one twenty four, Cook County, Illinois, as follows. Section one is the incorporation of preambles. The board hereby finds that all of the recitals contained in the preambles of this resolution are full, true, and correct. And does incorporate them into this resolution by reference. Section two is public hearing. The board, there hereby calls a public hearing to be held at six P M. On the twenty first day of July, twenty twenty one, at this building, the administrative building, twenty twenty nine, excuse me, twenty nine, twenty nine, West eighty seventh Street. Evergreen Park, Illinois, in the district, concerning the board's intent to sell the bonds and to receive public comments reporting the proposal to sell the bonds. Section three is notice. The secretary of the board shall publish notice of the hearing at least once in the Daily South Town. The same being a newspaper of general circulation in the district, not less than seven nor more than thirty days before the date of the hearing. And post at least forty eight hours before the hearing a copy of said notice at the principal office of the board. Which notice will be continuously available for public review during the entire forty eight hour period preceding the hearing. Section four is form of notice. Notice of the hearing shall appear above the name of the secretary and shall be in substantially the following form, and they. Share the form as well. Do we have discussion on this?
Yes, it should be tabled to the July meeting per your timeline. So that's informational.
Yes, sorry.
No, that's okay. I think that everybody needs to know it's very public, but.
I'm declaring the intention prior.
Yeah, table it. So we need to, I need to vote tonight to approve to be posted. But July. Posted in July. So all you're doing tonight is approving to be posted, and then in July, you approve.
The resolution.
That's right. For the bond.
Certainly.
We have to have a hearing first.
Yes.
Sorry to clarify. You should adopt, you need to adopt both of those resolutions tonight.
Tonight.
You're not gonna have a hearing until next month.
Until right before our.
Right. So tonight, we're in motion to adopt the resolution.
That's why I.
Tonight, we'll adopt the resolution declaring the intention.
That's right. Yes.
Got approved. Okay, so I will read what we are agreeing to, which is on the agenda, and it is just to declare the intention. So I will read those again. Our clarification, and I appreciate that. So item number M is to approve resolution declaring the intention of issue, excuse me, the intention. To issue six million dollars working cash fund bonds of the district for the purpose of increasing the district's working cash fund. And directing that notice of such intention be published in the manner provided by law.
So we're gonna change that word approved to adapt.
We are approving a resolution to declare the intention.
We're adapting a resolution. We're not approving.
Okay.
Correct? Is that what you said?
Yes, that's.
Okay, okay. So intention is not the, you know, it's the operative word here.
Adapt the resolution.
Okay.
I know. What a mouthful, right? Thank you. So I will make the first motion.
May we have a second? I'll second. And a roll call?
Uh, Kim Leonard? Yes. Rachel Merrickman?
Yes.
Judy Basin?
Yes.
Claudia Parker?
Yes.
Colleen Clemzak?
Yes.
So we're gonna use adapt on the second one, too.
Yes, I'm just making sure that the rest of it.
Yep.
Changed according. Okay, so. That resolution calling, okay. And there's not a date attached to that one. Okay, so. Consent agenda item number K is to adopt the resolution calling for a public hearing. Concerning the intent of the Board of Education of the district to sell six million dollars working cash bond for the purpose of increasing the working cash fund of the district. May I please have a first motion?
I'll make the motion.
May I please have a second?
I'll second.
And a roll call, please?
Rachel Merrickman?
Yes.
Kimberly Leonard?
Yes.
Judy Basin?
Yes.
Claudia Parker?
Yes.
Colleen Clemzak?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Oh. Each three. All right.
She's like, I'm out of here. Yeah.
Okay. Agenda item O is to approve board policy regarding SOPA as presented by Claudia and the policy that's ready today. Do I have a first?
I'll make the motion. Don't be polite.
May I please have a second?
So I put a hole. So Judy Basin?
Yes.
Rachel Merrickman?
Yes.
Kimberly Leonard?
Yes.
Colleen Clemzak?
Yes.
And Claudia Parker?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed.
And then finally, is to approve the duty Mulprun Scholarship recipients in the amount of three hundred and fifty each for each of the three recipients. Do I have someone to make that first motion, please?
I'll second.
And a roll call? Sorry.
Claudia Parker?
Kim Leonard?
Yes.
Colleen Clemzak? Yes.
Judy Basin?
Yes.
Rachel Merrickman?
Yes.
Motion passed.
That was a lot of.
I know. We like a bunch of my little age.
My goodness, right? So we are now going to a, we now need to recess a closed session. To discuss an appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged. Against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity. May I please have a first motion?
I'll make first motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
And a roll call?
Kim Leonard?
Yes.
Rachel Merrickman?
Yes.
Judy Basin?
Yes.
Claudia Parker?
Yes.
Colleen Clemzak?
Yes.
Will there be any action taken, Colleen, after we come back from closed session?
There may be, yes.
We want to make a leave.
Yes, yes, you are.